Everyone's here, so let's stand and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, changes to the agenda. I see that Jen highlighted one. Nine D be the resignation of Kevin Masters for basketball. Is there anything else? Any other changes to the agenda?
I have one for ten, under ten, and then down by B for donations. An additional donation received from Alter Metal Recycling, $2,500 for the L.O. Trap team.
Okay. Anything else? Any other changes? If not, is there a motion to approve those changes?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the changes.
Thanks, Kyle. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Pat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, we need to approve the agenda. Can I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Thanks, Angie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Deb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any public input? Okay. Moving on to recognition and good things happening. National Bus and Van Driver Appreciation Day is February 22nd, tomorrow. Thank you to all the ISD 499 bus and van drivers. February is I Love to Read Month. This is an entire month dedicated to promoting a love of reading and being read too. We want to take a moment to remind everyone to continue to engage in literacy activities at home and at school. Paraprofessional Recognition Week is in the state of Minnesota, is held the last full week of January. The Rio Grande School District is very thankful for our paraprofessional staff and appreciates all they do to make our schools great. Thank you, paraprofessionals. Is there anything else that anyone has?
Can we add to congratulate Cam Hungerhold on his thousand points and Benny on her thousand points and rebounds?
Absolutely. Good one. Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Alright, reports. I have a rep for Jungy Flooring. Your turn, you're up. Thank you.
Steve, come on up. You can stand right here if you'd like. Thank you.
So here's the samples.
Sure.
I guess just so everyone knows, this is for the small gym.
Gym floor.
Yep, and he's one of the quotes that we looked at as a committee for the building and grounds. And so we ask him to... He's actually got the quote that the Building and Grounds Committee is recommending for approval tonight. So we ask him to come in and give us a presentation on what that...
I guess I didn't really know how to do a presentation.
You're on camera too, by the way.
So the thicker material is the one that we quoted. The thinner material is just for the color. And then the thinner material, that red, is available in just a red, with all the wood green.
Oh, right. Great.
Same price.
Okay.
The only thing that would be different is there's the rolls of the solid red come in a little bit shorter roll, so there would be additional seams.
Oh, that makes sense.
So what we have in there now, would that be similar to this?
Yeah. Well, I think it's...
Do you think it's just the...
Yeah.
Okay. This didn't seem like it would be that heavy.
And you're talking the red just for like the out...
But I don't know that.
Yeah, it didn't seem like it was that heavy.
What was your question?
That red's just like the boundary area.
Same as the...
Yep, okay.
And then instead of the gray, it'll be the wood? It'll look like the wood?
That wood there, yeah.
Yeah.
Looked like a real gym floor.
Yeah.
That's basically, obviously the quote. And then everything Katie outlined.
Right, and I think this is one I got.
Katie was striking there.
Yeah. Yep, this is one I sent to these guys, so...
That thicker material, how would that perform with the dribbling of the ball?
If you guys want to take a look.
Well, okay. So I was an installer for a long time, too. I put in a lot of that material. It's really tough. And with that cushion on there, it really didn't sound like it did to me. Yep. I didn't really pull together a big presentation for you guys.
That's okay. We've been talking about it a lot, so...
Any questions anybody has?
One question that we really haven't talked to you about too much would be, we are hoping install would be complete by August. Is that doable?
Yep.
Okay. We have a lot of volleyball and stuff going on, so you can imagine we need that space.
Yeah, I don't think Katie would talk to me about timeline, but yeah.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause we... Once spring springs, oftentimes our fire teacher will take the kids outside and curriculum will happen out there. Or we can do some adjustments in terms of the principal's master schedule too, to make it work for you guys if you need to start late this spring. Do you absolutely add to?
Totally, yes.
Okay.
The duration of it is not huge, so...
Right.
Whenever it works best for you guys.
And the supply is adequate? Like, we wouldn't have to be waiting for something to come in, or...
She's already checked stock.
Okay.
Do you paint immediately, or is...
No, it has to sit, and...
I thought that's what I meant, but...
So on there, it says that basically you have to wait until you can get an auto scrubber on it.
Oh, so it's the month? Yeah, okay.
And once you can get the auto scrubber on it, then you scrub the whole floor and then get painted.
Okay. So each set it down essentially all summer?
Yep.
For you guys? Okay. That's doable. You wanna do that?
You don't have to. You can still do things in there once it's done, but $72 for sure after we install it. It has to sit, so...
Okay.
You don't mess up the building or anything.
Right.
Preferably, we can tell everybody it's done, so they don't get down.
Right.
So when are you thinking you'd have to get in there to start?
Just as soon as you guys could light us up.
Does it have to sit a month before lines are painted?
Yeah.
Probably May-ish?
It'd be good.
And it includes the...
But you know, like a date in May, just so I can get it on our schedule.
If we could do it... Thinking of testing it. Probably the second to last week of May would be the earliest. So maybe last...
Third week of May.
Yeah, would be fine. I'm currently guessing without looking at the district calendar, but it seems reasonable. Because again, once August hits, there's more and more activity around here and...
Our last week is the last week of May, which is the 27th, is a Monday. Or go over earlier.
Yeah, you could maybe even be in earlier.
Otherwise, that's just our last week of school, the 27th.
Yeah, that should be fine. Sounds reasonable.
You wanna schedule that?
So the last week of May? The third week of May, or the...
Last week is the 27th. The 20th, then we're getting ready for gr... I mean, we don't have graduation in there, but still, we're kinda... To me, there's probably less going on after graduation is done.
Yeah.
So can we do May...
Twenty-seventh.
Can we do May 27th?
It'll be like Memorial Week, right?
Yeah. Because then what? You'd probably let it sit June, paint July? Is that probably, and then ready to go August 1st?
Yeah.
How's the paint hold up?
Good.
Yeah? How, I mean, often, three years or...
That, I don't have an exact answer for, but typically, like I, being a former installer, I did a ton of these, and I don't ever remember a time where they had to redo it.
Yeah.
So I think the paint would last the duration of the floor.
Yeah.
Something drastic happens to it.
I didn't read the quote or anything, but is it just standard basketball, and two basketball courts and a volleyball, or is there...
Basketball, I have volleyball.
Okay. If there's any other additional?
Anything to be added.
Okay.
Just to confirm for everybody that hasn't talked about it as much as the Building and Grounds Committee, it includes the removal of the existing flooring?
Yeah.
The... Any repairs to the base floor underneath? A subfloor, whatever?
I did notice when I was here, I made a review, that there was some repair that needed to be done underneath the flooring. So I did figure some.
Okay.
Basically covers what I could see. I mean, obviously, there's more, which I don't anticipate, but there is a good addition.
Time and material.
The only other question that I had that we didn't really talk about when I was here before, is the wall base. Are we gonna do like a code base like this? I believe that there's like a big transitional base on it.
I don't even know what to...
Yeah. They're called, but they're somewhere either. Weird base there.
And that's one thing that I asked Katie, if she had any conversations with you guys before we did it. And she said no, she's asking you guys today.
So you think that that's not... Something like that's not in your quote?
Like vinyl base is not, because I didn't know what, if we're taking that off and reinstalling yet.
She did not reach out to any of us, anyway.
Okay.
So that's something we should probably look at right away.
Right. Because I think there's like a transitional base on there right now. It looks like it's been painted before.
To reuse, you're suggesting, maybe?
That's what I wondered, if we could just reuse that?
Right.
Or if we provide something similar to this.
Generally speaking, what would be the quote on that?
So if we're just gonna do vinyl base like this, I mean, probably looking at less than a ton of wood.
Right.
Okay.
That's nothing major, I just wanted to have a short conversation.
Yeah.
And have you discussed the red part being the solid red?
Yeah, it's gonna be the solid red.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what the...
He said the lined red was the same price, but I was just was...
But that, yeah, that sheet did...
So I guess I want to clarify too. So when we go to the solid red, which is fine, I just... So like, let's say this is the insert, and then the border is around it. So the lengths of the rolls of the wood grain come long enough to make that span. The lengths of the red do not.
That's what I was wondering.
So there is gonna be what we call buck seam welded into it, which is not a big deal. It's still considered seamless for when we're done.
Oh, okay.
But you can see it.
Okay.
So it's not... Aesthetically, it's the only reason I'm bringing it up, because I don't want anybody to say, well, nobody said there's gonna be an additional seam. It's not a big deal.
You mean the lengthwise?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, you could easily hide those on the south end of the gym.
Yeah, and we can talk with you guys too when it comes to seam placement.
Right. Because there's no real track... I mean, the door's up on the north end.
As you go out.
You wouldn't want it on the north end.
So the wood grain is long.
Yeah.
Just so you guys know.
There's nothing on the bottom of the... Oh, she just took a picture. It's like brick.
Just painted?
Painted brick. So we're gonna need a...
We could either do it that way, or put the...
I would put the nice vinyl on the bottom.
Oh, we did the vinyl thing on the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nicer.
It's easier to clean.
Well, that's true, too.
So it includes that? It includes the prep of the flooring, removal and disposal?
Disposal.
Okay? Sounds good.
We'll probably have more discussion once we get to this part of the agenda. Steve, let's have you and I somehow touch base here. I'll probably just email you or give you a call.
Sure.
I think your phone number's on here somewhere.
I can give you my card.
Okay, yeah. I'll kind of talk with the whole group, but also the committee too, of kind of what the color, things like that, what we're talking about now.
Yeah.
Just make sure we're on the same page.
Okay.
I'll probably call you off my cellphone. Is it two and eight numbers?
Yes, my cellphone's on there.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Any other questions before he takes off? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can hang on to those samples for a little while, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Moving on to the student representative report.
So tonight, we have our new student rep here, Casey. Girls' basketball finished last night, and boys are in their last regular season week. And they'll start playoffs next week, and it's epic. It's cool.
Pancakes today, I was there.
Pancake, me too. Casey, anything to add?
Welcome.
Yes.
Glad to have you. Thank you. Tanya Keim is gonna let us know what she's been up to.
This school's always busy. The first thing I wanted to share with you actually just relates to the school in general. But a year ago, I wrote a Safe Route to School grant through the Minnesota Department of Education, and it finally came through, where we received 28 bikes for a bike fleet for the physical education program. She will start a bike curriculum as well called Walk Bike Fun, and it's a really neat curriculum that really focuses on bike safety. So we purchased our bikes through Ride Your Bike Company in Austin. They were fabulous to work with. If you need a bike for the spring, summer coming up, I highly recommend them. They... I emailed and called a ton, and we kind of came up with a plan, and then I had to say, you know what? I can't afford these bikes. The first, I planned on just buying Walmart bikes, and then the grant company actually came back and said, no, we want you to buy more expensive bikes. So I went from $150 bikes to $300, $400 bikes. But that meant I couldn't buy as many. So when I talked to Ride Your Bike Company, he said, hey, give me a second. I'm gonna call Trek Headquarters, see what I can do. And so he got us bikes at cost.
Oh, gosh.
Which was huge, because I said, I really need 28 bikes, otherwise I kind of have to scrap this grant altogether. So they came through for us. We got 28 bikes. We have 30 helmets. He delivered... He assembled them for us. He delivered them in a big U-Haul one day. The students were outside, and they were very excited to see them arrive. So I just printed out a few pictures for you, the bikes. There's two different sizes. They're... And we got two different colors. So Mrs. Cunney can just say, you go grab a black bike, you go grab a red bike, and then students kind of know what size their bikes are, showing for that. And she's really hoping to take those fourth and fifth graders out on the bike trail, since we're right here. And then he also encouraged us to use the terrain that we have out there, to use that grass. He said, these bikes are made to... For everything. They are made for the pavement, they are made for the grass. He said, get out there and use them. And they're tough. They're tough bikes. They're not cheap bikes. They're... We're really pretty lucky to have them. So once I get all that final paperwork finalized, we have to do a pre-survey with the students. We do a post-survey, all those kind of different things. We'll do a parent survey as well. And then, once I have all that paperwork done, I'm hoping to maybe write another grant through them to purchase a trailer. That would give us a great safe place to store them, as well as allow us to go to the other end of the bike trail and have students ride back. So that's kind of what I'm thinking of working on for the next round. We also... And that bike grant was $11,000, we received. We also just received a Smith grant, Southeast Minnesota Initiative Foundation. I wrote it for a SMART Movement Room. SMART means stimulating movement, or stimulating maturity through accelerated readiness training. And so it's really about building students' fine motor and large motor skills, their hand-eye coordination, getting them ready for school. Students who struggle sitting in their chair, a lot of times they're lacking their muscle development in their core. And so this kind of a room builds on those. Students who struggle with writing, a lot of times have poor fine motor. So this kind of a room will focus on that. I received $8,000 from Smith to create this room. So right now, it is in the overflow room, and I have trampoline, a squeeze machine, balance boards, putty that they can pull through. We've got a pedal, a hand peddler. We have cones that they go over. And some of them are just movement exercises, some of them are fine motor. Some of them have... We have stationary bike. A lot of... This one, they really enjoy. It's got screws, flathead screwdrivers, Allen wrenches, and things like that. This is definitely their favorite. This is the squeeze machine.
Oh, Dave, that's weird.
An adult kid's... Trampoline is another favorite one. We have a rock wall that we purchased as part of the grant, and that will actually go in the elementary gym.
Preschool sounds fun.
But a lot of learning happens while they're doing these activities, too. And that's one thing that I do want to stress, is that, yes, they look like they're having a great time, and that's, for me, my most important thing in preschool, is teaching them that learning is fun. And so while they are doing the hopscotch on the liquid tiles, they are hopping and saying the different letter sounds, the cards that I have on there. While they're trying to work on balancing, they're cross crawling their bodies and working on different letter sounds, and chief identification and things like that. I still have $2,700 left to spend on that grant. I have about $2,000 that has been ordered, that's on the way yet. That includes like a jungle gym that will have a slide that they can climb up, which is really important. It has monkey bars in it for them. We don't let my young students do the monkey bars out on the playground, so this will be a safe place, because they want to do that. This will be a great place for them to do that. What else do we have?
Tanya, is that the rock wall, too, in the performance center?
So there's two, there'll be two.
Okay.
That rock wall that was going in the performance center, because of the sheet rock wall, we had to move it.
Okay.
Yep, so that one will go in the elementary gym. And then that jungle gym system actually has a small rock wall in it, too. So there'll be two different places for there. A balance beam is coming. A lot of fine motor activities I bought for this one, and a lot of different sensory things, too. They have a slat track. This is for the book. It's actual, like, I think it's an eight-hour training I did probably 15 years ago or so. But it's... I just bought the book again, just to kind of give myself a refresher, and it kind of gives you, it's almost like an obstacle course that they recommend. They actually have done studies on different head start programs for students who do this 15 to 25 minutes, three days a week, and they have seen tremendous adults on that class that are on doing this. So those are the two big grants that preschool has received in the last year. Right now, we are leaning toward on voluntary pre-K. The last several years, Leroy has applies as a school readiness, and that is just asking the state for preschool funding, because right now, it's very limited, and students pay tuition for preschool. And we know the economy, and it's hard for families. We have received $30,000 last year for preschool scholarships. I can use 15 for both year, or 15 for one year, 15 for the other. I'm always out. I need more funds. So the last several... This is my third year here, and before that, we've always applied as a school readiness, and we haven't received the grants. So this year, I kind of read through the paperwork, and I looked at other schools who are getting the money, and I thought, what? We're the same size school, we have the same needs. What do we need to do differently for this application to receive it? So I rewrote it as a voluntary pre-K program. It's just different words and has different requirements. So voluntary pre-K, I have to do some different assessments. No problem, we have the paperwork here, I can do that. The school has to pay the preschool teacher on a master contract. You already do that. So we... Everything that is on the requirements for voluntary pre-K, we can hit those things. Now, we just have to cross our fingers. If we receive it, it would make the four, five preschool program free. Just four or five. Three, four would still be tuition-based, but we're really, really hoping that that goes through. And the last thing I wanted to think, to say, is just, I want to say thank you to administration, Mr. Hungerhold, Mrs. Johnson. I have been in several schools, and this school appreciates and understands the importance of early childhood, and if it's not like that everywhere, I can say, hey, Mr. Hungerhold, I need this, or I want to do the SMART Movement Room. What do you think? Do it, do it, always. I love that, and I appreciate that. And everybody should know how much early childhood, how important it is. And we stress and we stress, the research shows how important the first five years are, but it's not always funded that way. And I just want to say that this school is doing a really nice job on understanding and appreciating and pushing the importance of early childhood. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any questions on preschool?
Thank you.
Awesome job. Keep up the good work, Tanya. Awesome. Thank you.
Amazing.
Alright. Well, we go from that to the principals' rep.
Well, this is gonna be really exciting. You should have a handout in front of you. Basically, just reiterate the PLC goals at our professional learning communities. These are the four areas we were focusing on this year. And we meet once a month, middle school, high school, and then a separate time for elementary, and then they each have their own staff meeting throughout the month, too. So I do see each group twice a month, and these four things are always on the agenda. We always make sure we're reviewing these. And along with the teacher evals, I think I told you guys, not only are the teachers that are on the curriculum, are on the observation cycle doing it, but I've changed it this year to, even if you're not on the observation cycle, you're still doing a growth goal, and you still meet with me, and we still have two checkpoints throughout the year. So that's something new that I did this year, because if you weren't on the observation cycle, you wouldn't see me for... I mean, I'd be in your room, but you wouldn't officially have paperwork for like three years. So I changed that this year, so everybody's... I meet with everybody now every year, so... I was going... I like it, I like the format, I liked their Marzano piece to it, so that's going really well, so... Webpages. Last staff enrollment day, I met with all of the different activities and groups, Student Council, NHS, Leadership Academy, all those, the advisors for those. And their goal is by next, the start of next school year, is everybody will have their own link on their webpage, so that'll kind of be our PR for each, you know, each activity, so they could put things on there, what they're doing, maybe requirements, just advertise better for our school and what we're doing. So that's our goal to start out in the fall, is all of our activities, because Trevor last year did a good job putting together the athletics, and I wanted to kind of follow suit on that with all of our other activities. So hopefully by the end of, or the start of next year, all of our activities at our school have a link or have a webpage so people will be able to find information on there throughout the year, so. Working on that. Um, I just put openings, just so you guys are aware, second grade, two science and English, two sped, and then we always need some paras. Those have been posted, um, well, second grade and English and one science were posted February 1st. The rest of them have been posted throughout the entire year. Um, so just kind of letting you know what we're looking for. First grade numbers are up to 28. Um, we are looking for, uh, it's kind of late in the year, but we would like to get another teacher, but it'd be more of a co-teacher format, um, in the same room and pull out. Um, but you need an applicant in order to have a second person in there. So um, we are working on that. I do, I have put some feelers out to some of our uh, maybe retired people or some that have, have left that are doing other things to see if they'd be interested in that. So kind of waiting for an answer on those. Um, and actually I was just talking to the high school staff today, I think in the next, within the next three to four weeks, I think we're gonna have close to seven to 10, somewhere along there of new, of new students in the next month or so. I know we have two families, one with four and one possibly with four or five. And then I know I met with another one today, so we're, our enrollment is, is going up. And like I said, the next month, we're gonna have probably somewhere seven to 10 new students in the building ranging from first grade to actually juniors who would start next year, they're finishing up. So kind of a whole gamut, so just letting you know, we are getting some enrollment, so it's gonna get busy, but if anybody here in the first grade, we are working on trying to find that second person to at least be co-teaching for the remainder of the year, so.
She have a pair in the enrollment?
Yeah, she, there's pretty much a pair in there the whole day.
That's 28's a lot.
Yep, two or three pairs go, go in and out, so. She's been doing a great job down there. Um, there hasn't been any issues, actually it's going really well. Um, but the pair, we do have a second person and there's sometimes three. So, but trying to find that, um, trying to find another teacher with license that we could work something out, so. Um, as of yesterday, I have another new university connection. I've, I met with Buena Vista in Iowa. Um, they have a, uh, uh, down in Mason City at Nyack, they actually, Buena Vista has a, like, a school within a school down there, so you don't have to go all the way down to Storm Lake. Um, so I met with uh, someone in the education department, they have given me a, the dean of educations, um, contact and we are working on setting up a meeting so we can talk about um, student teaching and getting people up here and utilizing our school as student teaching. But the person I talked to yesterday, I sent all of our openings and they're gonna send it out to all of their recently graduated um, students, all of our openings, so they're helping us out that way too, so. And I just listed kind of the ones that I've been working with this year, one on state Augsburg, the other new one was Concordia St. Paul, South Dakota State, New, Udo Del River Falls. The only one I've not heard back from is I've been trying to get in contact with Northern Iowa, um, but I just have not had any response from them. So still working on making those university connections and try to get student teachers here, so just kind of giving you guys in the loop on that. Um, registration for next year, I can't believe that we're even talking about that yet, but uh, talked to the high school staff today, they're gonna be getting Nikki their course um, descriptions and then we'll start working on the schedule, master schedules, and then we'll have registration night coming up here hopefully in March. Um, usually try to get that done by April, so. That is coming up, believe it or not. Um, test prep, we had MCAs coming up, ACTs, um, during our wind times throughout the day. Um, we are now working um, on test prep, um, test strategies, things like that. Um, Kathy Dudley is going to be our new district assessment coordinator. She has graciously accepted that position and is now helping me navigate through that um, so we can stay on pace and get our testing done. And then elementary, we've been doing a book blast, uh, which has gone over really well. Um, instead of, we used to do some fundraisers in elementary, but this is uh, two years now we've got it where the kids get books. Um, last year I think every kid got at least six books in the elementary to take home and keep his or her own, so. Kind of a neat thing, the kids really like it, they come wrapped. If you haven't seen or seen pictures, it's something that the, the kids really like and it, it makes sense to me that what they're earning is books, take them home and read. Um, so I really like that, so that's, but we're gonna stick with that again, so. Um, that is coming up, I'm setting a date for that, so keep your ears and eyes open for that, so. That's kind of what I've been working on the start of new year, so. Any questions?
Any uh, questions for Erin? So you, you said that we got some new students coming in, which is awesome. I think it'd be cool if we somehow can highlight what Tanya's doing and I think that would help along those lines as well, because that's, what she's been doing is fantastic.
Uh, thanks. I did, we um, do an interview with Axel and he's kind of making a video thing.
Perfect.
We actually did it twice and both times his phone filled up, so we have to redo it again. So that, once that gets out or once we can meet up again, then he'll have like a video thingy.
Perfect, glad to hear it, that's great. Sounds good, thanks Erin.
You bet.
Jen?
All right, just a few things tonight for you. Um, way back in May, I mentioned to all of you that on, no, I'm sorry, I apologize, back in May and September, uh, Erin and I discussed our strategic plan with all of you and kind of where we were at checking off the boxes. Well, it's time to do that again. So in March, you can expect us to talk about our strategic plan, kind of where we are. He mentioned a couple of things today already, um, that we're trying to work on, including our webpage. Um, Tanya mentioned tonight, you know, trying to again, get videos out there, market our school and all the great things that are happening, so all that's part of our strategic plan, so we'll talk more heavily on that in March. Uh, don't forget, we do our staff spotlight every month, so Angie Emerson was our staff spotlight here this past month, so keep an eye out for those, we do like to utilize our Facebook for that. Uh, so they, and they're pretty fun for us. Um, as Tanya mentioned, the monthly videos, so Mr. Hungerholt and I will continue to do those, they are posted on YouTube every month. Um, and we try to tackle, we feel that Axel has a pretty good pulse of our community, so he, he generates the questions for us and then we do the best we can to add more um, to the video if needed, and so we'll continue to do that. We've had a couple of folks, like our community ed director was interviewed, Tanya was, she'll have to do it again, um, but we try to as much as we can. They get sick of seeing Erin and I, for sure Erin. And so, I mean, we totally have to change it up every once in a while, so.
Board members are next.
Right, that's a good idea. Uh, great job to our FFA students and advisor. This week, it's, it's Wednesday already, but my gosh, have they been busy. Um, Pat and I on the way in, we're talking about how the bacon and pancakes this morning were amazing, some of the best we've ever had, they, and they were fantastic, but I bet you did not know this about FFA. There are over 800 FFA member, student members in America. That means there's over 9,000 chapters in America. So it's a pretty big organization that does really, really great things, um, and we are just one of many, but we do really good things, so I'm pretty proud of these kids and, and of course, Mrs. Tim for what she does. Uh, let's see here, of course it's that time of year and you'll probably hear from me next month on this too, um, but some session updates, which I think are really important. I know as MSBA members, you probably get some of these updates as well, but for the administrative team, they're pretty important for us, so we can do some advocating, email our folks to talk about us rural districts and what we need to. Uh, so just a couple of brief things tonight with that. Uh, the legislative session convened on the 12th of February, um, and they have until May 20th to finish their work, our legislators do. Um, so keep in mind too, our governor did sign a two-year budget, but with that, we do have a $2.4 billion surplus, but they're looking to maneuver that money in other places, so it may or may not be a surplus. So remember that, that's my disclaimer, right now it may or may not be. But a couple of laws that I personally am looking at for us here are things such as modifying hours of instructional requirements, increasing the general education basic formula allowance, that's a big one, authorizing roof projects as part of long-term facility maintenance, modifying the special education aid, mental health screening for our students and staff, um, amending the READ Act, which our policy committee keeps talking about and all of you will hear about it eventually, I was gonna present on tonight, but then now I found this, that, maybe I'll wait. Um, accountability plans, academic standard changes, that earned sick and safe time and new legislation, there's some pushback with that now too. So a lot of things are happening actually up there right now and again, only have till the end of May to deal with it and uh, so we'll see what happens, but in March I'll come back hopefully with a little bit more information of what's happening in St. Paul. Um, and that's it for me tonight, I guess, I won't keep you too long.
Okay, thanks Jen. Any questions for Jen? Okay, none, thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, we got the January minutes in our packets, uh, are there any questions or corrections or additions to that? Okay, uh, treasures reports, um, we got those as well, is there any questions about?
I just have one comment. You probably noticed that in terms of the budget summary, the balance is off, uh, but that's due to our tax levy, levy has not balanced out yet and that is very common for your district, it has always been that way this time of year. So once we start working more into the budget, um, you'll still balance out just fine. Just wanted you guys to.
Any other comments or questions on the treasures reports? Okay, fundraisers, class of 2029, uh, Dutch Mill Flower Bulb Sale, um, for field trips and supplies etc., uh, class of 2030. Wow, that just seems like a long time. Class trip to St. Paul, pastry puffin sale. Oh, that sounds good. Um, Washington DC trip, class 2025, pancake breakfast, cookie decorating kits etc. Personnel. Uh, approval of hiring Craig Knight as a head golf coach. Uh, approval of the resignation of Kerry Lowell effective at the end of this year. Um, approval of the resignation of Barbie Tiller effective January 31st, this past January 31st. Approval of the hiring of Kathy Dudley as a district assessment coordinator. Um, approval of uh, 2023 Leroy Olster Education Association Master Contract.
Just wait a minute, folks, wait on that.
I think that's supposed to be down further, isn't it?
Yes, I apologize, I should have reminded you.
Okay, scratch that and we'll talk about that.
That'll be in the discussion component, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No worries.
Oh, I thought I meant that.
No worries. Okay, and then finally, the approval of the resignation of Kelly's Masters as head girls basketball coach at the end of this season. Any questions on any of that stuff on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dave, is there a second? Amanda?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, any other discussion?
I just, I just want to say, you know, to, in the resignation of Kerry Lowell and Barbie Tiller, you know, just to thank them for the service that they have given to our school.
Okay. Would you like to put that into your motion?
Yes, I'd like, like to thank Kerry and Barbie for all they've done.
Would you like to second that as well, Amanda? Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, moving on to policy review. The policy committee has been busy, it looks like. Um, so uh, we're looking at the second reading of policy 201, 202, 203, 203.1, 203.2, 203.5, and 203.6. Okay, any uh, comments from the policy committee on any of that stuff before?
Just that these are, the 200 series is highly regulated by MSBA, um, we don't really change anything from what their recommendations are. Um, I don't mean highly regulated, I mean highly recommended.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, that's the word I meant to say. Um, so we, we go by their recommendations from MSBA on, on those.
They send annual updates?
They do.
Okay.
And they send a red line if there's any changes, but these have been pretty steady recommendations, so. We didn't have any changes this year.
Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, is there a motion to approve the second reading of those policies?
I'll make a motion to approve second reading of 201, 202, 203, 203.1, 203.2, 203.5, and 203.6.
Okay, thank you Kyle, is there a second?
No second.
Thanks Dave. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, uh, first reading of the following policies. 204, 205, 206, 207, 208, 209, 210, 211, 212, 213. First reading on those, is there, what's the policy committee have to say about any of that, anything?
Similar statement, um, I did want to mention to um, in number 206, that we all would take time to read that, um, there's some, there's some really interesting information in there and I know that in, in past, they've said, you know, we kind of rely on our, our representatives to read these more carefully, but I would just like to ask all of you to go into 206 and especially the data privacy considerations, it's, it's kind of an interesting one and um, but I, there isn't any changes to be made, I just think that it's something we should all take a look at.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on any of those? If not, is there a motion to approve the first reading of those stated policies?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 204, 205, 206, 207, 208, 209, 210, 211, 212, and 213.
Okay, thank you Pat, is there a second?
I will.
Angie? All right, thanks Angie. Um, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Next, 10B donations. Uh, Performance Center turf, uh, value of approximately $4,000 for turf donated by Sin Lawn Minnesota, so that was pretty darn awesome. Uh, Classic Carpets and Interiors donation of transition molding for the new turf in the Performance Center, so thank you to those guys. And then the addition was the donation by Alter Metal of $2,500 for the trap team. So what I would like is a motion, uh, acknowledging those, accepting those and thanking those folks for those donations. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion and I'd like to thank um, Classic Carpet, um, Sin Lawn and um,
Alter Metal.
Alter Metal, Metal for their donations.
Thanks Dave, is there a second to that?
No second.
Thanks Amanda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can't be opposed to that one. Motion carried. All right, um, discussion and approval of the first reading of the draft of the, of the school district calendar for next year.
Crazy, right?
It is, it is.
As Erin said tonight, wow, it's right around the corner. Uh, so each year, uh, we like to come, be, be a little bit ahead of the game, we want this in front of you right away and it's more important that our families see that we're working on this early enough for them, so they have time to schedule vacations, schedule their holidays, whatever it may be. Uh, so I, I realize February is very early, but again, it's only the first reading, that still gives us time, march through essentially July, if any changes occur, to the second reading and final reading is what it is. Um, keep in mind too, we do work with consortium schools on development of this calendar, it's also been sent to the staff, uh, if they have any inputs that they would like to give in terms of modifications of this, uh, but again, this is just your first reading, you'll see it again probably in February, we'd like to get it done and get it out there.
March.
Or, I'm sorry, March, March, yes.
This just feels like March.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. Uh, any questions about the calendar? All right, is there a motion to approve the first reading of uh, calendar for school year 24, 25?
I move that we have the first approval, for, a re, approval of the first reading.
Perfect. Okay, thanks Deb, is there a second?
Second.
Angie, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, uh, discussion and approval of a resolution for reductions in programs and positions, so this is a standard thing that needs to be done every year, so.
Highly recommended by MASA, MSBA, that we follow statute, that if we feel the budget is a little too tight or um, we need to make cuts, of course, the budget is approved by all of you and so that's why we want to start with this as we move forward. Um, keep in mind too, we want to be um, responsible with our constituents' dollars too. Um, so we are looking every day, as I mentioned way back in November, Mr. Hungerholt and business manager Peterson and I meet weekly to discuss next year's budget and how we need to tweak some things. Now keep in mind with that budget, it's the day-to-day operations as well as other things such as the elementary gym floor, we're looking at a whole gamut of things. Um, so yes, some of it's personnel, some of it's programming, uh, a lot of it is building and grounds, of course, whatever it may be, but we are talking about those things, so this only helps us in case there are cuts. Again, we always need to do that, we are a small school and we have to look at that. Um, if there are class sizes of three or four, that class likely will be cut, um, that offering of that class will be cut. Um, but we are pretty creative and have been lately, um, that we, we don't like cutting personnel, instead we like giving them maybe the overload sections or collaborating as co-teachers on things, um, but still offering opportunities to kids, make sure we are well-rounded with our curriculum, um, and that of course, our teachers are developed in terms of serving our kids too, so we look at all that. So tonight's motion would just be to the continuance of the philosophy we've had the last few years, that we're looking at everything.
Okay. Do I have any questions about that? Otherwise it's just kind of standard procedure each year to allow the administration to make reductions in programs and positions if needed. Um, would someone like to make a motion to adopt that resolution?
So.
Angie, um, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Kyle, uh, does this need to be a roll call vote?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Nope, somebody else asked me that, I can't remember who and I looked it up, so, somebody else asked me.
Maybe it was me and I forgot, who knows? So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Okay. Um, all right, discussion on the, the new LO Activities and Coaches Handbook.
How nice is this, you guys? Huge shout out to Mr. Carrier, Mr. Hungerholt, and Coach Angie Olson for contributing to this, I'm sure there's more people, but those are the three that I know, um, who sent emails, who asked questions, who did their research, so huge, huge shout out. But this, um, this document is not only to help our coaches understand what, what our rules, our expectations, our laws, our practices are in terms of why they are a staff member here, but it also helps our administrative why they are a staff member here, but it also helps our administrative team as well as RED fulfill their obligation of supervision and evaluation of the coaches. Now, keep in mind, this is a handbook, so there may be changes as we go, because we know that legislation will come out. We also know the Minnesota State High School League doesn't always have their stuff together and sometimes makes changes, and so we won't identify that at times, too. But you will all be notified of that as always. But I don't know, is there any key things Angie or Erin, you guys would like to address on this? I am pretty proud of it, pretty happy. These guys did an outstanding job.
I think the, one of the things, we kind of had bits and pieces at different, some here, some there, some there. And I think this was really a piece put together to encompass everything, so everything's in one spot. So, it's not, oh, we have to go look it up over here, we got.
And made sure that they all were, like, were saying the same things.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
Yeah, try to take as much gray out as you could and make it more consistent.
Trevor spent a lot of time on it. He did a lot of work on it, because he did a nice job.
Okay, any other questions? We all got a chance to read that, I'm sure. Pages do that. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the Activities and Coaches Handbook?
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you, Pat. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, now, discussion and approval of the elementary gym floor. So, we got the quote for Jungy, which is what our Building and Grounds Committee actually is recommending. We got two others. One was local, which didn't include removal and disposal and painting lines and all those kinds of things, so. And they had never done it.
First time doing it.
And they had never done it before, correct. Where these guys have done many of them. The third quote was around 100,000 or 110,000.
Yes.
And so, that was for a wood floor as well. So, I guess, I think a lot of our questions were probably answered earlier.
And as I was walking Steve out, too, I said, you know, we can discuss, you know, after the meeting, too, specifically with our committee, if you so choose, but, or we can wait, but he will, our timing is impeccable, he said. You guys are early on this. We have time to make decisions, change as if need be. He said he'd probably have to re-quote it by 1,000 or two just to be safe, which is still well within, you know, the other quotes that we got. So, you know, I think they're going to be flexible with us and, and work with us on all this.
Well, I guess we could make a motion approving it within 1,000 or two as well.
Especially if we're going to put the full, you know, the, whatever that.
Yeah. What I would like to do, if you guys could make a motion, no more than 80,000, because I budgeted at 85, I'd rather not go to that 85, to be honest. That's just for my numbers, to be safe. But if we have, if we have some flexibility, that would be nice. Unlikely, I will get you the new quote with the other information on it.
So, probably should fill everyone in on how it's going to be paid for.
Right. So, there's various ways, but we are looking at our LTFM document. So, it's, it's, it's very similar to our LED lighting project, because it was already installed years ago, and it's now being removed. Think of it as your lights as well. They were installed and then removed. So, that's what we're looking at. Now, Jungy and I still have to determine, is it going to be a one-year, one-shot deal, or are we going to spread out the billing? Either way, works for the Jungy company. I just got to make sure MDE is okay with either way we do it, and so I haven't got a lot of feedback from them, which is good, by the way. So, that's just kind of one of those little details that, at the end of the day, doesn't really matter, because we could pay the first year this year, June 30th, and then July 1st, the next day, pay the second half. So, how we bill it doesn't matter.
We'll do that over two years.
Yes.
But we'll do that over two years.
Yes. We could easily do that one this year, June 30th, and then for our fiscal year, July 1, the next year. So, we can be very creative with that, so.
What would, I don't have my paper in front of me right now, but what was the quote?
72,000.
72,000.
72,000, and so you're saying?
If you could say no more than 80, because then, then I can negotiate with him and say, you know what? I'm not allowed to go any further than this.
Okay.
Do, do something different. So.
And if you guys don't like that number, we can say 75, or we can, whatever.
Yeah, 77, 76, it doesn't matter to me. But just give me a little, I need a little leeway, just in case. You know, just because he hasn't done, you know, around. I don't want to put him in a position.
1,000-ish for that, so. Okay. Any other questions about, about this project?
Keep in mind, too, as I said, we're early on this. If something that I feel is uncomfortable comes up, I will be sure to bring it up to you in March. Of course, Building and Grounds Committee as well, but the full board will be well aware.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, would someone like to make a motion approving the Jungy quote?
I'll motion to approve the Jungy quote for elementary gym floor removal install up to $80,000.
Okay. Thank you, Angie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Dave. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Okay, if not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, thank you.
Do we need to do the teachers?
Yeah, before we do the, any committee reports, we better, we better discuss and approve the teacher's contract. Somehow it got left off the agenda, so sorry about that.
And I literally told Dave, no, I moved it. I moved it to discussion. Oops, sorry about that.
So, we just moved it from the consent agenda down to?
10G. Let's shoot, do 10G.
Yes.
And then school board reports, you mean 10H.
Thank you, Angie. Sorry about that, everybody.
So, Jen, if you would touch base on all the highlights of that contract, I'd appreciate that.
All right, so in front of you are two documents. One is the EA contract that we hope you ratify tonight. And then you have a singular page that has some highlights on it. It looks like it's on letterhead. These are the changes. So, I'll go through them briefly. I won't take up all your night tonight, because many of you have heard about this before when we were in closed session. A couple of things to note. We did have a mediation date, November 13th. We did a final proposal right after your closed session as a board on the 21st to the EA, or the teachers' union. After the EA, or then the EA presented our final proposal, final, final proposal, and a vote was cast, and we received that on 1/26, hence why it's in front of you today. So, the highlights of this, and again, on the sheets, you'll notice there is highlighting that shows pages and section numbers of where the changes are. In your copy, it is not highlighted. It is not highlighted, but you can reflect back and forth. So, the first one is for the salary. Year one is a 3%, year two is a 3.25%. The second piece is concession stand advisor, increased pay. It's two seasons worth, 2,1500. That's a $428 increase. There's some inaccurate language. The last time we negotiated for our cheerleading and advisor pay, our new, our new contract actually reflects the accurate language that we have actively been using the last two years anyway. So, we're good with that. Substitute teaching, we did increase. So, this is internal staff only. We did increase that to $35 per class period. That's a $10 increase per hour. The next is elementary student contact time. There was some differences between elementary and high school contract. There still is a little bit, but this makes this a little bit easier for not only master scheduling, but it gives more opportunities to kids, just that tiny little bit of time, that little half an hour of time, little half hour of time. So, that was approved. Insurance, we did decide to increase district family contribution to $100 a month. The next is HSA insurance. We did have to, there was some archaic language in the last couple contracts that was never really reviewed, looked at, talked about. So, we took a lot of time, this contract negotiation, to talk about where we are. We all know, even in our personal lives, how insurance has changed so much and the language there within. And so, we took some time this time to really look at this. So, when you have a moment in your free time, take a peek at the language we are offering you tonight. Next one is classroom budgets. They would like language to reflect budgets, so meaning district office budgets. We hand out, for example, Ms. Rayburn, if she is teaching kindergarten, she will get a budget from me or Erin by May 1st of each year. So, we tried to do that anyway. Sometimes we're a little off, but we can do that for them. The next one is, this is common practice. It is in statute anyway, but they wanted some local language for this. But we did add language to reflect back pay to any contract start, meaning retro pay. We are well past the end date of their former contract. Yes, we will retro pay that. It also has to do with some activities that happen with other contracts, some unfortunate events. So, now it's in, in, in their contract. E-learning, minor change to the language. It's one of the last pages of the contract, but we want to reflect that we will follow legislative desires or MDE desires. Of course, we want to embrace what they would like us to do if, for example, another pandemic would hit, God forbid. Finally, one last thing, PTO. We are starting by September 1st. The teachers are going to formulate a committee of board members, teachers, and administrators, so Erin and I will be part of that committee, to talk about, research, and possibly negotiate into their next contract PTO language rather than their sick vacation, whatever language it currently have. Again, it's going to be all research-based at this point. So, finally, to wrap up, district total package in dollars is roughly $286,219. The overall total package percentage is 7.7%. Throughout the document that I shared with you tonight with the highlights, it talks to you kind of about what position, either EA or district position, wanted what, and how we negotiated through that. Also below, on the bottom of the page, it also talks about, you know, either position, what they retracted off the table to. I think that's it.
Very good.
Committee, did I miss anything, though?
Yes, I think you did everything.
Okay, I hope so.
So, the, the contract that Jen has handed out, each one of us has the updated language.
Yes.
And it's gone to the, to the teachers and?
Yes, so I can give you some timelines on that. So, once we were told way back on the 26th, I think I just read to you, is that right?
Yep.
Yes, the very next day, I offered for our union representatives to meet with me either the following week, the Tuesday or Wednesday I was here. Unfortunately, one of them was sick and wasn't, or had other obligations, couldn't meet. So, a second email was sent out probably a week or two later, offering some time to meet, and also the changes that I believe to be accurate and well within our legal means to add. Their union representative did show up to our, our district and haven't heard anything since, so no comments are good comments, right? Or, I don't know what that old saying is, but Dave, you know what those old sayings are.
We can assume everything's okay.
Yeah, right? So, there we go.
All right. Any, any questions about any of that? But otherwise, good job summarizing that, Jen. Thank you. If not, a motion to ratify, would that be the right word? Ratify the 23, 24, 24, 25 teacher contract.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Pat. Is there a second to that?
I'll second the motion.
Thanks, Amanda. Any other discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, and thank you. I, I really need to say this. I have to thank Dave and Dave and Pat personally. We put a lot of time and hours in, a lot of closed-door meetings. Sometimes our voices would raise and sometimes they wouldn't, and, but, you know, overall, I would like to suggest that the four of us were on the same page 90% of the time. When we went to closed session with the board, all of you need to be thanked as well. It's a hard process, you know, money's personal, and, and we know that. But we also know, we appreciate our teaching staff so much, and so this is a reflection of that, and I hope they see that. This is one of the largest salary percentage raises they've received in probably five or six contracts. And that's on that sheet I gave you as well. So, thank you to everybody. It was hard, but it was well worth it. You know, I hope they feel respected.
Thank you. Okay, now, are there any school board committee reports? I'm not going to go through each one, but if you have a report?
I have a report I'd like to share.
Sounds good.
From the Community Ed Advisory Council. Had a meeting February 7th, and I just wanted to commend our community ed director and all that's happening, lots of exciting things, and all the, the good ways that it's connecting with the community. And she also mentioned that there, she is in great, great need for youth soccer coaches. Soccer has caught on to be such fun, and the kids want to go, and she just needs more coaches. So, you know, spread the word, or you, if you, yourself would. She said, you don't have to know a lot about it. We could, we can train you in. This is, this is from, this is from Kate Ror. But anyway, it's just been one of the things that's really taken off here, and so she's, she's looking for that. And so, all the classes are going well, and things are doing well.
I love that she re-employed her mother to do pink she-. That's Angie's thing.
Yes, people have, I've been hearing a lot of good things about that.
I haven't done my homework yet for last week.
All right, anybody else have any committee?
Scholarship has our annual pancake breakfast on March 24th. It is the week before Easter, so come on out, March 24th.
Will the pancakes be as good as they were today?
They better. I, I don't cook them, so that's a good thing.
I guess you could hire Malik.
He should be there.
There you go. There you go. Anybody else? I guess Building and Grounds, we've kind of covered that already, so. Anything else? Okay. So, the district calendar, it looks like March 12th, District Policy Committee meeting, committee meeting. The 18th is Staff Development Day, so there's no school. The 19th is a school board meeting at 6:00. March 28th, Staff Development, again, no school. March 29th through April 1st is the spring break, so there's no school then. May 24th, already we're talking graduation, so. All right, anything else anybody has to bring up to the meeting before we adjourn? Okay, if nothing, is there a motion to adjourn? Don't all chime in. Kyle, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Amanda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.